Do you have to the, Joni? I don't see the letter from Christie and Brian in the packet.
Yeah, I didn't have.
I tried to, I can print copies of it. That's what I put it in.
I do not see it.
All right, it's seven o'clock, so we will call the regular April Northport Village Council meeting to order and let the roll call show that Dean, Ager, Cook, Cavendish, Harper, and McCann are in attendance. Will is absent. I don't think he's joining us via Zoom, so. Item two is approval of the agenda, any amendments or additions? I would like to make one addition under ex officio board members, I'd like to add item C, NLT UA update. We had our meeting yesterday, a couple of things to go over. And, and just note during the planning commission report, we will hear the annual report from planning commission chair Jane Gale.
For a second, you got me panicked, like, it wasn't me.
Any other additions or corrections to the agenda? All right, then, all in favor of the agenda as amended, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the agenda is set. We've got the approval of two council meeting minutes from the month of March, March thirteenth, regular meeting and a March nineteenth special meeting.
I move that we approve the March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five minutes.
I second. All right, I've already called in a couple of changes, so. Okay.
Yeah, and I corrected them.
And I have a, I have a comment under the special order business in which we discussed the candidates for village manager, I don't, I see several of us quoted, but I don't see the comments from trustee Dean sitting next to me.
I can go back and look at the recording. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any others? All right, it was a, a motion was made by Laura, supported by Edwin, to adopt the approval of March thirteen minutes with the addition of Dean's comments. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. And then we have our March nineteenth special meeting.
I move that we approve the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five special meeting minutes.
Second. All right, moved by Laura, supported by Hugh, to approve the minutes, any discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. This brings us to our first public comments. Public comment at the village council is five minutes. And if you'd like to raise your hand, I can recognize you in person or on Zoom, and we've got one right here. Barb?
Hi, Barb Conley, Northport and Township Supervisor, just want to thank this board and planning commission for last night, successful meeting, community meeting on housing, and especially thank Laura for bringing food. And I hope that we will continue to meet on a periodic basis until we are successful. Pledge the township support.
Thank you. Thanks, Barbara. Any others? Yeah, go ahead.
Eric Pope's, Ransom Street, Northport. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak. Last night was a great meeting we had at school, most of you were there, and it was a wonderful turnout, well as a message. I think it was clear that the people, at least that were in attendance, are in support as well as myself. It was a wonderful thing. I'd like to touch base first on Buster Dane. And I'll just reiterate kind of my comment that I had, it was short and sweet last night. If we as a community, as we go forward, exhaust all of our other options, both township and school and private lands, and we're come up short, then let's take our park for portable housing. But I would like to see Northport try and band together and figure out a different solution, at least during the beginning, as we monitor Buster Dane's use over the next five to 10 years. And see what happens with our school and the T-ball teams that are okay for next year, and also just maybe monitor the park. So that brings me to another thing I noticed today, I noticed Mr. McMillan's resume on our website pop up. And it would brought to my attention that Mr. McMillan would be appointing him to the planning commission tonight. Congratulations. That's great, and I would like to offer myself as an alternative for that position. And though I lack so much experience, especially compared to this fellow, what I do have is a passion and love of Northport. I think all of you know me, most of you know me up here. Raised here, alumni of Northport, raising the next generation with Wildcats, and I have the best interests of this town in my heart. I don't have the experience, in fact, two months ago, I knew nothing of local government. Really, I was just concerned with getting to work and taking care of my kids. And now I'm tired, but I'd like to offer myself for that position. And thank you for, for hearing me, and please consider the fact that I live in the village, I'm right here, I have a different perspective. I may not be the smartest guy, but I'm passionate, so thank you all.
Thanks, Eric. Any other public comments? Looking at the room, seeing no hands. Looking at the Zoom, nobody unmuting. Okay. If there's no other public comment, then we will move on to correspondence. There was a correspondence from Christie Fisher and Brian Hafner.
I'm working on trying to get prints of that for you, I thought that it had been placed in the Dropbox, but the wifi at the county building is not as reliable as in my office, as I thought it was. It did load in the Dropbox as, as council member. Harper and the chicken, so I'm trying, I'm working on that right now, but essentially it was a, it was a letter concerning concerning the need for housing within, within the area, in particular for those that are, that are that are operating businesses, so. That was the gist of the letter, and I will still pitch you copies of it before the meeting is over, and also post it in Dropbox.
All right. Brings us to our staff reports, first up is the clerk.
I provided my report for everyone, noting that we've completed our asset management in preparation for the budget, and that we did renew the tree fund CD, and so and so that's for another three months, and then the treasurer and I did prepare the bill sheet for you tonight in balancing out funds, we have the answer and questions.
Just a general question that somebody can come here me on the answer to, with the true oil in the stock market and the dramatic decline, do the do rates on CDs go down or do they go up, do we know, or?
Generally, generally, the rates on CDs are more pegged to bond, bond than equity stocks, so. They're likely to fluctuate, but it's, it's probably unpredictable as, at this point, as to which way it goes, because they're more sensitive to the general economic conditions than to, than to market equities, and, and the market was up 3,000 points yesterday and down. What was it, 1,200 points today, something like that.
So, okay, thank you, that was a question I should have asked. I should have asked Dr. Google.
Might be why they offered us a three month at a better rate.
Any, anything else for the clerk? Thanks, Joni. Treasurer?
Any questions for?
Her report was in the.
Not the new guy, very open. Are we working with a new Texas ester? So that was good, we'll meet again. Bring her texts, excuse me.
All right. Thanks, Diana. DPW report was in the Dropbox, anything for Chris?
Everybody has my report in their packet, any questions?
I have a quick question, is the sidewalk water thing the one in front of the? Yeah, I figured, I just wanted to be sure there wasn't another one.
What's it in front of?
Between towns and the end.
And the, and the, like, the hotel, the union entrance and that, there's we've been talking about it, infrastructure for a long time, the sidewalks lifted, that tree is like three times bigger than all the other trees, there might be a water leak. Anyway. It's been ongoing, but you can't do it in the winter, so.
Okay.
But that's why I just wanted to be sure it wasn't a new problem.
When you, when you say you refurbished numerous picnic tables, what does that mean, does that mean?
They, just over the years, you know.
Right.
Wood rots, so.
Oh, you replaced plates?
Repair some that were bad.
Okay, because you don't put anything on those, do you, you don't put any?
No, that doesn't work well.
Thank you.
Anything else for Chris? All right, hearing done, we'll move on to Marina. There was no report, but I see Bill is on the Zoom.
I, I, I am here, bad internet connection, so I can't be there by video. No, it's been, it's been really quiet. Right now, I'm currently in the process of interviewing and hiring some, some new dockhands for the summer, and have some really nice, real nice prospects, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we're flying, village manager, zoning administrator, he's back.
Yes, I am. Not, not really a lot to report, as we, as I think you're aware, as of the thirty-first of March, I send responsibilities as county administrator. I have been coming in on occasion to take care of business here and there, sign checks, approve invoices, things like that. During the month of March, when there were, there was some significant, at least relatively for Northport, significant land use activity, there was a I'm, I'm reviewing a permit for a, for a single family home on West Third Street, which is one of the lots, you will recall, we split a larger seven acre, I think it was, well, I don't remember exactly how my acres, but it was a relatively large parcel, and it's the last parcel on the west, or the south side, west end of the village before you actually enter into the, into the township. And one of those lots, it's actually the middle lot. They're proposing to build a single family residence. And the, the only thing that's a holdup for that is, it's potentially, it, it's currently shown on the map within a floodplain, and that's a, that's a, that's a problem, the occupant or the, the owner of the lot wants to you know, you know, survey it and believes it can be located in an area that's outside of the floodplain, and they're pursuing what is essentially a variance or a, or a determination that, that it is not within the floodplain, so it's not required to be insured. There are potentially some, some other land use issues that may need to be addressed before the permit can be issued. But I think the, the applicant is an architect, and I think they're knowledgeable enough, they're going to be able to bring this to fruition, so that, that land use permit is, is only applied for at this point. Also did, did approve a, a permit for a residential deck on nine oh three Mill Street. Applicant was Andy Thomas, and then two permits at six hundred North Mill Street, applicant was a Matt Galloway, and it's a construction of an accessory structure and a retaining wall, two separate land use permits. We also, I also approved a land use permit for the, you'll recall, you approved the variance for the property on the west side of West, West Drive, I think it is, that we approved the variance, and I also have approved a land use permit to actually construct the house consistent with that variance. Other than that, not a whole lot more to report, at some point, you know, and I, I certainly understand the the desire to protect a, protect a park within, that is uniquely owned by the township, but within the village. And I, I think that all of you on council, and perhaps not all of the public, but all of you on council know the reason that we have looked at the Buster Dane's Park as a possibility for for residential affordable or attainable housing, primarily because of all the potential lots that we did have, and we have looked at pretty much everything that's owned by the village. Mostly because that's and I, I guess the thing I want to make sure you understand is the reason we look at that is because if we're going to do development, and particularly if we're going to use tax increment financing, or even a, a a pilot, as was discussed last night, you're dealing with a zero base, it's never been on, it's not on the tax rolls now. So if it does, if it is developed, you have from a zero to whatever the cost of the development will be, or as the tax base that you'll apply the increment to, so there's more money available for the development when it's a private privately, or excuse me, than when it is a privately owned facility. That, that site has streets on all four sides, it has water and sewer, there are no utility lines or interfering utility easements or anything like that, for a lot of reasons. It does tick every box that would be appropriate to consider for residential development. And again, if we were to do that, would require the transfer of a DNR land use recreational land use restriction, transfer it to other like valued property. And we were in the process and have been in the process of pursuing that with the DNR to transfer that from that lot to a Seventh Street lot owned by, owned by the village. There were a lot of details that were necessary to work out, and we had a, a change of supervisor at the township level that, that, and, and of course, the su, the new supervisor needed to be brought up to speed on that project. And also, the new board brought up to speed, so we could make sure that they were comfortable, perhaps, with that development, but all I, all I really want you to know is we have looked at other, other options, and we will take a closer look at any option that that you are ask us to, to consider. When I say us, I really mean the staff here and, and, and my, my successors, village manager. We'll look at any other option that you'd like us to look at, but given the information we know right now, there really is no better site than, than that within the village, but that, that essentially all I'd like to say about that, beyond those comments, I have been in contact with Mr. Adenless, my, my successor, on three or four occasions. We plan to do that again, at least one more time. Be, at, before he takes office on the twenty-first, so he'll be at your next meeting. And we also considering whether or not we should delay the planning commission meeting, it would normally be Wednesday of next week, for when he can be present, and because they're potentially considering a zoning, a rezoning for another parcel. And, and it, we think that, I think that it would be a good thing for him to be the, be the, be the zoning administrator at the very beginning of that process, rather than to take it over from from me after a public hearing has been conducted, I think they, they should be conducted, that hearing would be best conducted in the manner that he sees fit, rather than the way that, that I would see fit. Not that I would do it wrong, but I might do it differently, so. That, that's, that's at least my recommendation, so. Unless you have any questions for me, that's my report, I wish it had been in writing, but unfortunately, like I said, I'm otherwise engaged.
Sure. So the idea would be to delay the planning commission meeting to the following week?
No, I think it was.
Or go Sunday?
Proposal would be the thirtieth, thirtieth, rather.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what we're looking.
Part of it is also because if the public hearing is tied into it, you have to have enough time for the notifications.
That's true, and, and also, I, I don't think I briefed you on this issue either, which is potentially dispositive, because we're not even really entirely sure that a rezoning is necessary. Because there's some, we, we, Joni and I discovered some really kind of disturbing, frankly, information that it may already be zoned to the zone that is desired by the applicant.
Who, who are we talking about here?
We're talking about a parcel that is, if you, if you know the bulk storage yard area?
Yeah.
Immediately south of that, that has, that has potentially or not, or potentially not access into, from Police Road.
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's a landlot one?
Yes, yes, eighteen acre parcel, right there.
Conservation recreation, yeah.
Keith Rhodes.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, and the, and the potential, the potential rezoning. The, the, what I, what I had suggested to Mr., Mr. Rhodes is what's called a conditional rezon that will, that if he, if he achieves certain conditions, that the rezoning would occur. If he does not, it reverts back to the, to the, the original zone. I believe we're going, we talked about a portion of the, the west side, about the west four acres being rezoned to accommodate one, one, one single family residence, and the rest of it to be potentially developed as, as attainable housing, but yeah, that would be, if that were to be done, it would be as a private development funded by his, by it, by a private foundation that he intends to create, I think he's in the, what I would characterize as in the in the beginning phases of learning what to do and how to do that kind of development. I think he's very, he's sincere in what he wants to do. I think he's, he's in for an interesting education, would be the way that I expressed it to him, and and I think that, that he's aware of that, that this is not the easiest thing to do, even if he's able to obtain the potential rezoning, but again, the conditions would be things like the, that he obtains access, confirmed access, we're encouraging him to obtain access from from Mill Street as well as, as, as Police Road. Because, or even North Shore, but regardless, if, if, if development that size would be best served by, by dual, a dual entrance for emergency services purposes, because you don't want to have, you know, something that blocks, and I think Chief will tell you, you don't want to have something that blocks an entrance to a subdivision and have all the houses burned down because of the fire trucks can't get there. That's something, that's something that, 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 you know, has not been considered much in Northport, because you just don't have, you haven't had that kind of development, but it's it's common in, in, in any, in any in any subdivision, in fact, many, many jurisdictions have a restriction on the length of any street can't be more than sometimes 500 or 1,000 feet until it has another cross street, though, things like that. And that parcel is big enough that, you know, you might get into that kind of situation, so there are a lot of things that have to come together before that, that type of development would occur. And you had a question, council member?
Yeah, it didn't have anything to do with that, I think that's what you're talking about, is really planning commission issue at this point. No, I wanted to go back to your LUP for the West Third Street. When we, I just want to remind the council and, and the zoning administrator that when we approved that division, we were given a promise that the trail would, would still be able to go through, that there would still be a public access of that trail. And as soon as we granted that division, suddenly there was yellow tape up on the trail, blocking it.
I've heard that story.
It's since come down, but I, I just want to know, like, did that come up in this land use permit application, and, and what are the implications going forward?
That particular parcel is distant from the
Okay, so it's not involved?
You're talking about is not involved, so, so it didn't come up for that reason, but I've also, I have been contacted by another citizen that owns an adjoining parcel to raise those questions with me.
Yeah, okay. Good to know, thanks.
I also.
Because I think the access that you're talking about is really on the east, the east side of the parcel that was.
I haven't actually, like, walked it and plotted it out, but it's it was concerning to me when it first happened, I think it's it's in limbo right now, it seems like, so.
I heard the same story.
I just wanted to touch and make sure, because I don't feel like you stressed it, but the property that is at the end of the fleece, it is a planning commission thing, but there is also going to have to be a land split at some point for the parcel, correct?
Yeah, that's one of the considerations.
That comes to us.
Yeah.
And then also, if it is in fact a mistake, and it isn't conserving, even though it shows conservation, but it wasn't actually changed ever officially to conservation, then it's actually R2, and it's a use by right, what they're proposing, so then we don't have any say at all.
That's correct, and that, that's.
And they also don't have to make it attainable housing, I mean, they had a Plan B also, that was, they're going to split it and sell it as fifty whatever lots, or however many it was, so.
That's a possibility.
So I just want to be sure, people are aware, we may not have anything, we don't, that's what they're still investigating.
Just because I don't know the answer, and the public doesn't either, what is the name of the, of the owner again?
Which?
Keith Rhodes, and he was there last night, he spoke.
Oh, yes, he spoke at the end.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else for Joe? All right, we will move on to our ex officio board reports, first up is planning commission.
Jane, will you do the annual report, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you have anything?
No, I, I mean.
After the meeting, I mean.
No, because mostly what we had was, well, there was a presentation from Keith Rhodes, and that was most of the meeting, and if people want more information for that, it's in the Dropbox for planning commission, and there is a bunch of documentation that he provided, not a full plan, because they don't have a full plan, but you can see a lot more information about what they proposed, it's also, I believe, the meeting's probably on the web, on the YouTube, or the planning commission meeting?
I don't think so, but I
Oh, okay.
Get it on there.
Okay. Anyway, it was a lengthy presentation, so, and most of what was shared was verbal, not in writing, so.
Yeah, the annual report, which is required by the Planning and Engineering Act, is in the Dropbox. And my first one, and I made a mistake on it. When Chris appointed me to the planning commission, he appointed me to a three-year term, not to a term, or not to complete Nicole Arbory's term. So my term does not end until April of 2028, and that leaves two or one vacancy which runs through 2027. And we have a commitment from the current commissioner, Bob Newell, that he would appreciate a second or a second reappointment. So I think everything else is pretty self-explanatory. So if there's anything that the trustees would like me to include in the next report, I can do that, but otherwise, I can answer any questions you might have.
I would like to compliment you and your team for what you've achieved this year, you've done a lot.
Thank you, Susan, I will report back.
All right, nothing else for Jane, we'll move on to infrastructure.
And I don't have anything new to report, because we're waiting for Jared to get in, so that we can move forward, we have multiple projects that we want to get going, but we don't want to have our starting meeting with Jim on those, and then switch to Jared.
All right, then, NLT UA, we had our bi-monthly meeting on Tuesday, we had our annual board meeting to start, where we elected our, our new officers, and they are as follows, Chair Chris McCann, Vice Chair Mike McMillan, Secretary Jim Root, and Treasurer Barb Conley. In our regular meeting, we adopted three policies, a capital asset policy, a grinder pump procurement policy, and a reconciliation policy. Some of these came from our, our audit as a best practice, so we implemented those. And the grinder pump procurement is because we're meeting on a bi-monthly basis, we want to be able to keep an inventory of at minimum four grinder pumps on hand, we have switched to a new grinder pump that are being installed, as old ones are being pulled out. But this way, we don't have to call a special meeting to approve the, the purchase of, of the grinder pumps to keep that level. The, the bulk of the meeting was a, and I did mention it last night at the housing meeting, we got a presentation on a proposal for a for a capacity and growth and capital improvement evaluation. It's a five-step process. It is expensive, but it's going to give us an idea of what type of growth we'll be able to handle, as the sewer can handle capacity in certain areas. Also, some of the sludge handling, there's an inefficiency up there with that, and so. Um and so uh the clerk of the N L T U A, myself and Jacobs, we're gonna be meeting to see if there's anything we can push off until next year to try to get part of this in this year's budget and and finish the project in next year's budget. It's a, it's a seven-month process from start to finish. Um but there will be a lot of data analysis, and so that's something we're looking at as we move towards development in in the village. And and the sewer assessment. Uh the total cost of the project is a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. Um they, steps one through three are the most uh critical or or important as they would to start the project. That's about ninety thousand dollars, and then the growth opportunities and the capital improvement plan are forty-one thousand dollars. But it's a data gap analysis, data collection, uh existing capacity analysis, solid handling, system evaluation are the other two.
No grants available for this?
Uh those are things we're gonna look into. Like I said, we're gonna meet with uh Mark.
Okay.
And and.
It's it's not this budget, it's not our budget, it's theirs.
Yeah, it's N L T U A's budget.
Okay, right, okay.
But yeah, it's uh.
All right.
Costly, but it will, it will be important. Um other than that, any questions on N L T U A? All right, hearing none, we'll move on to our uh first discussion item. We've got power outage, business continuation solution. There was a proposal in the packet for a couple alternatives, or at least one.
Basically, just information, I tell you, the 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 source of this item was a couple weeks ago. We had uh two power outages and basically in a row. I think the one started on Sunday and continued into Monday morning. It was cold enough that it also resulted, I mean, the, so we lost computers and furnace. As a result, I decided to close down the office because it was too cold to work in the building and we didn't have any computers to work on anyway. Uh so we closed the building down for the day and we thought that would be the end of it. And then that, I think was Thursday of that week, uh if I recall, we had another outage of almost the same duration. And from everything that I have heard, the uh particularly from Joni and other staff members, never had anything like that happen, uh those kinda outages. And then that was followed by the ice storm to our east, where there are still people. The last two weeks have not had power. So I thought it would be a good idea for you to at least to start thinking about what your solution is. Uh when we had those two outages, my thought went immediately to the idea of an all um you know, full ability, a generator, gas-powered, uh natural gas powered generator, we're gonna operate this entire building, uh including our computers. Uh when we got the, when we got the um uh uh response back, the the proposal back, it probably is more, certainly more than we would wanna spend in this budget here, perhaps unless unless you thought otherwise. I would not necessarily recommend it, but it is, it does give us an idea of what such a solution would cost. Alternatives could possibly be uh discussions with uh Affinity, our uh I T uh consultant. Right now, I'm 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 not at all pleased with, not them, they're very good, we're we're happy with them. But I'm not at all pleased with the way our network uh is working at the moment. I've been trying to print and post to Dropbox that letter that was in my email since the doc, the time this meeting started and it's thirty-five minutes later. And it's simply because.
It's a murder.
Yeah, it's in the Dropbox now, yes it is, I finally got it there. But but um I'm not at all pleased with the way that's working. And I'm not sure that it might have had something to do with that that power loss. Because we were not able, even once we got power restored after the second outage, as we were, the power was restored, I think around noon or something like that, as I recall. We were able, both times, we had to get the servers back up and they were not functioning properly. For Joni was on vacation for part of it. Uh Diana and I, neither Diana and I could get into the N L T U A server, which not able to get in at all. We weren't sure why, and Affinity couldn't even figure it out. So at the very least, I I would recommend, uh and and it may not, uh uh it may be able to be accomplished within just the normal, the normal uh contract that we have with Affinity right now. To have them review our network infrastructure to make sure there is not something that we need to repair, replace, and at least get a, get a more robust battery backup for that system so it powers down and doesn't uh and and saves whatever's, you know, whatever it needs to save before a power outage uh knocks it out again, so.
Jim, what was the cost of the generator?
It was fifteen thousand dollars, I think was.
I think it'd be well worth it myself.
I I I I was actually thinking that that, you know, I was thinking more in terms of what a residential. Cause frankly, we don't have a whole lot here, more than a small ranch house. And I've seen, I've seen those purchased, I've seen those installed for between five and seven thousand dollars.
Well, I'm sure they're also, though, if it's gonna power it and automatically turn it on, they're including the electrical work.
Yeah, I'm talking.
Yeah, so I mean, they're talking about putting in the sub panel and all the stuff so that it can power on, it's not just a generator.
Yeah, it's it's it, yes, it is other things that are necessary. But again, I've seen residential from no generator and no, no power uh panel to a insta, a full installation of less than seven thousand dollars for a residence of this size. So I don't know if they're.
I have someone that we could, we could get in our bid too.
Yeah, I think another bid would really.
Yeah.
Would be in order in a huge way.
Susan, Susan, what do you think?
I think we, I think we absolutely need it, because these villages east of us that had this ice storm. I mean, if you, if you have a catastrophe like that, which is more likely as things change in the climate, you wanna be able to function as a municipality, you wanna be able to send people texts and emails. So if our dam blows and we have a flood in the village, you know, there's all kinds of things.
I I I I agree, and that's why I I sought the bids initially. But I I would agree with Councilmember Harper, the fifteen thousand dollar amount was was about twice what I was expecting. Uh maybe I was naive, but it was about twice what I was expecting, sort of minimum, we'll look for other alternatives. And would recommend to uh Jared that that he present those to you at a future meeting. I'm hoping we're beyond the ice storm uh and and unexpected power outage outages. The only time we've ever had it in other time, we've had a power outage, was when we had a suicide squirrel that. On the uh on the transformer up here, and I was amazed when it happened, I heard the loud pop and Chris, they're all, I know what's, I know what that was. And we walked over and there the poor thing was, but uh but it is something I think that you need to, you need to consider. You know, cause uh just for the people at home in Calhoun County. Inside joke. We spent fifteen thousand dollars on a business continuation plan, and all that was was. Piece of paper, you know, to to make sure that we can continue to function as a municipality in the, in the event of any sort of natural disaster. And and I I think you need to think of something, and I I really am kind of embarrassed I hadn't thought about this earlier in my tenure here, so.
Yeah, I think if we can find a cheaper alternative, that generator's the only way to go, it's a cutout switch and a switch over.
Right. We'll keep looking.
So we'll get some more bids. Uh okay, uh second item is replacement of overhead door at the D P W building. Again, there was a of some, at least one bid in there, and it sounds like another one's waiting to come in.
Yeah. Yeah, I, what I. I think a potential alternative, and we could potentially do it tonight or at our next meeting, um is to at least to authorize us to proceed to obtain uh a door. Um up to a certain dollar amount would be the way that I would recommend we proceed, but. Was that? Exactly.
Yeah.
And this has been on the asset review as something that needs addressed for a very long time.
Yeah.
Like a very, it's been high ranked for a long time.
So I originally, I originally had it as a discussion only item, primarily because at the time I did the agenda, we didn't even have any bids, but now we have one and and potentially another one coming in. So you might authorize us to accept a a bid up to the amount of the current bid would be a recommendation.
Uh make a motion to accept a bid for a new uh overhead garage door, uh not to exceed seventy-one hundred dollars. Well, circus. All right, made by McCann, supported by Cook. Overhead door not to exceed seventy-one hundred dollars, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, starting with Will.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Hugh.
Yes.
Susan.
Yes.
Edwin.
Yes.
And yes, all right, motion passes.
Thank you, thank you.
That's all we have for uh prior quarter discussion items at the moment.
Okay. Uh all right, brings us to new business, uh just a couple appointments. Uh so these uh council staff appointments will be for, a- as we move forward with our council as a whole, these will be the the liaisons to work with our our new village manager and bring issues to the council as a whole meetings. Uh the first appointment uh would be for staff liaison for infrastructure, and that appointment would be Laura Cavendish.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for taking on the role. Uh appointment of village council staff liaison for Parks and Marina would be Hugh Cook.
Thank you.
And I I didn't add it, but I can, I can do it at the next meeting, but I will ask, would trustee Harper like to serve as the third member of the finance committee, budget committee? It's a, it's a, uh we meet every three months, it's gonna be our new process. And you can think about it, I'm not asking, I'm just asking you in public today, but what we can, if you say no.
Well, talk about it, okay, there we go, not not jumping up and down about it.
I didn't like that.
He's overwhelmed.
All right, um uh item C uh was the uh appointment of P C members. All right, so uh so these are, these are nominations made by the president. They do need to be voted on by a majority of the village council. And the first nomination is gonna be for Bob Newell to serve a three-year term ending in twenty twenty-eight. If I could get a second on that.
One second.
All right, uh any discussion?
I strongly support about being reappointed. I mean, he's great and he's the chair of the tree committee, so he's, it's a great connection.
Yeah, his efforts are.
The bins are back out already.
You saw last night at the meeting, he had his arm out of the sling, he's like, I'm ready to lift. Uh all right, so uh this, uh again, it has to be a majority of the council, so take a roll call vote, starting with Edwin.
Yes.
Susan.
Yes.
Hugh.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
And yes. And uh my second nomination for uh planning commission uh is gonna be Mike McMillan. He did uh email me the other day and sent in a resume, and so if I could get a second on that, we could have discussion.
I'll second it.
All right, it's made by McCann, supported by Harper. Any discussion?
Um. I think it's, you know, we all, we all know, Mike did a fantastic job um as supervisor, and I served with him in N L T U A. Uh he's very committed and very knowledgeable about what's going on, and he's been um really involved and and I know continues to have a passion for the affordable housing um situation. And and he's very up to speed on the D N R transfer. Um should that come to, you know, fruition, I, you know, one way or another, um I think he's the obvious choice.
I kinda disagree as far as if we have somebody from the village that's interested, we'll at least think about it.
I also, we do already have a member that is not within the village. We have Hugh Scott who serves as the liaison and is on the township planning commission already. Um I would rather that we reserve it for someone who is a resident, um if if at all possible. And that seems that that is possible. Um so I would prefer not.
I don't know either man very well, but I I tend to vote for youth and eagerness and potential.
Okay.
No, no offense, Mike.
No, no, I I I have served with Mike on the N L T U A board. This council did support his nomination to the N L T U A board as an at-large member. And I appreciate Eric's uh willingness to serve.
Well, yeah.
But but making the nomination at at the meeting is a little different than that. But and there are gonna be other spots. We do nominate planning commissioners every two years.
And the point of words, we're really only supposed to be considering your nomination, we're not really supposed to be considering other potential non-nominations during this discussion.
That's true.
So the fact that someone else may be nominated in the future really is irrelevant to what we're talking about right now.
Point taken. Any other discussion?
This is an up and down on one person.
Correct.
Yeah.
If there's no.
Is this, let me ask another question, is this a vote that must be taken today?
We've had the vacancy for quite some time.
The vacancy has been o- open for almost a year, and and no one has come forward, and I have had zero luck in recruiting people to fill this vacancy. Uh the fact that Mike has has stepped forward to fill it.
Okay.
I think is is.
Okay, I understand.
There is a need.
I understand.
Um so if there's no other discussion?
Yeah, I can just indicate that I did prepare for the planning commission some months ago and not in anticipation of this nomination. A a memo regarding um membership on on the P C. And it does permit, uh because you have uh seven members, you you are permitted at least up to two non-resident members and one uh member that is a um that is like a liaison as as Laura is on the planning commission. So it is permissible, um I don't have a, have a recommendation regarding. Of course, I would stay neutral on any recommendation regarding the nomination as, as I showed as village manager. I just wanted to make it clear to you all and to the audience that it is, it is permissible to have two non-resident members.
Yeah, I did check the bylaws too today, it's a one ex officio and two at-large, non-village resident members.
But but again, it's not the, even the, the bylaws couldn't have been enacted.
Sure.
Uh the state statute is what controls and 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 that uh the memo that I give does, does detail that.
Okay.
Just cause there had been confusion in the past.
Yes, there had, because, and it was not so much a confusion of of whether you could have non-residents. It was if you, like, were you limited to, if you had two liaisons, could you not have, you know, a a second, a a second non-resident? And 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 how that interacted, and it it has to do with the number of, the number of P C members and 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 the size of the, you know, the population of the of the.
Village.
The village or township or whatever happens to be involved.
Right.
Okay.
And we do qualify for two non-residents, so that's, that's the case.
All right, so there's any other discussion?
I I just think that if this council is serious about affordable housing, you've got a, you've got a guy right here who is very up to speed, knows what he's talking about, um has experience, and he showed in dedication, showing up at meetings. We've had some planning commission members in the past who got on the, without really ever going to a planning commission meeting, got on the board and realized what it was, and then ghosted on on the commission. And we don't want that situation again, I guarantee you in this situation with Mike, that would never happen. And I don't think you can say you're serious about affordable housing and then say no to a very qualified member. So that's, that's what I have to say.
Any other discussion? All right, uh requires a roll call vote, starting with Will.
Yes.
Laura.
No.
Hugh.
No.
Susan.
Yes.
Edwin.
Yes.
And yes, motion passes. This term is from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven. Uh and that brings us to our payment of the bills, and the bill sheet is in the packets.
I move we pay the bills totaling eighteen thousand one hundred and one dollars and twenty-seven cents when funds become available.
Support. All right, made by Susan, supported by Hugh, to pay the bills in the amount of eighteen thousand one oh one and twenty-seven cents. Discussion?
Like these light months.
Yeah, it's a very light month. I know, I just was like, shoot.
Thought it was a typo.
Yeah.
Missing a one.
Yeah.
Uh all right, if there's no other discussion on the bills, uh roll call vote, starting with Edwin.
Yes.
Susan.
Yes.
Hugh.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
And yes, all right, motion passes. All right, that brings us to our second public comments. Again, like the first round, five minutes. Uh raise your hand, I can recognize you are on mutant zoom, and we've got one right here, hand raised. Barb.
Yeah, Barb Conley, again, township supervisor, just wanna make.
Yeah, Barb Conley, again, township supervisor. Just want to make people aware, we have a new accessory for the township. His name is Barry Waldron. He is in the office a couple of days a week, and you know, please drop by and say hi. And I, you know, he's a very nice guy coming up now from Ann Arbor for a couple of days a week, but intending to relocate eventually. And I believe he has the Masters in Urban Planning.
Congratulations on that change.
Yeah. Any other public comment? Thank you, Susan. All right. Eric?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you again, Eric, Ransom Street. Public comment we mostly directed at Mr. Dyer with his study today. All the reasons that you mentioned, we would like to use Buster Dame for affordable housing are very valid. Of course, it is the lowest hanging fruit. It's flat.
You should address the council.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm learning.
Yeah, we are. We're all.
So for all the reasons that Mr. Dyer mentioned, yes, it's, it's the best, quickest, fastest location to put affordable housing. But for all those reasons as well, it's very uniquely used by our residents, as we can see by the public pushback against using it as portable housing. I believe that the eight households that are proposed, that we all saw on the mock-up yesterday, Buster Dame would be great to have both eight potential new families. That would be wonderful. I think that much more than eight current Northport families, many, many more want to hold on to that property. And we also want to move forward with finding other possible locations for the affordable housing. You mentioned that you've gone through, you mentioned that you've gone through all of the properties and have looked them all, and you'd like to be reminded of possible locations. So I'd like to bring them up that I have not heard spoken of. The five acres west of the pickleball at Raymond Hill, it's a slightly sloped area. It's either township or village owned property. It's open. It's only has one possible NIMBY here. So let me all think about that place in our heads. It's pretty, it's a pretty great location for affordable housing. The current recycling center, which is on Lawrence Street, is by far the best location for the portable housing. Not only does it bring the sewer further north to businesses that could really use it and have been wanting it. It would help them, and it would also be a turnkey location to build on. That does, that does leave us, we do have to find a place for middle recycle bins, and I understand that. The other locations, West Street, there are multiple locations, over ten acres of school property there. Have we, has anyone approached, you know, weather be it?
Yes.
Okay. Also, there are lots of township properties on West Street. On Milk Guild, there are also properties. The Seventh Street DPW station currently, that's a pretty, that's a pretty controversial spot. I will say that a small two to four unit, after using the Brownfield grant, of course, a small two to four unit structure where the current DPW was would be wonderful there. A little four unit spot, not touching any of the surrounding trees or wetland. So I say all of that, and that's a lot of options, just a few, to name a few. And these are options that we could have like a popcorn effect as the affordable housing started to come in as we monitor Buster Dame and its use. And also look at the, the public and how they react as we go forward with this use of Buster Dame. I think, I think what I'm gathering tonight is that Buster Dame is definitely the top runner, and I think the heat will turn back up. Um, thank you for even considering me for a post. It's kind of funny. Yeah, I, I have a lot of passion. I have no experience. I will say that I am for affordable housing just as much as this guy. I live in one of the last affordable houses in Northport. My wife and I cannot move out of our nine hundred square foot home with three children and two melon meats because we can't afford a bigger home, even if we sold our home at the current market rates, which is paid off. We still are stuck in it, and we have tried to buy the house right over here by Sockerville. That's another story. So we are stuck. All that being said, yes to affordable housing, no to taking our public parks. It's really even to me a bit asinine that we even consider taking a public park from the people of Northport as a first resort. We haven't, it's, it's, especially when we have a recycling center with bins on it. I don't understand how these bins are getting more importance than people. Um, thank you all for listening to me. I'm sure you're all sick of me. I'm sick of myself. I'm very tired. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Yeah.
Nancy. Nancy Sherman, Ransom Street. Want to say I'm all for keeping that dog parked in the ballgame. I use it every day, twice a day, and I have since before it was law.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, Ellen Woods, Lawrence Street. Um, I've really, I've only been involved in this since I saw the Buster Dame signs. So, but I grew up under Buster Dame. And so I understand that, and I prefer not to touch that. However, I think, I'm sure you all know far more than I do, but it seems to me that a lot of this has occurred because of short-term rentals, which has basically destroyed Sutton's Bay and Big and Township. Has there been any discussion of putting a moratorium or a cap on it as of now?
That's been significantly discussed as the planning commission.
Yeah.
That's a misconception that short-term rentals will be returned to, will become long-term rentals.
Jim. Public comments are annoying, I'm not saying this.
It's okay. I don't mind it all. But so of course, that's obviously the, I think, would be one of the causes. But when we moved up here fifty years ago, you had the same problem. And you, with the golden door, you're going to have the same problem. However, this is me, whatever government gets involved, I've never seen anything run efficiently like that. Now, I don't know how to solve this issue. Certainly, we need affordable income housing, but even, I have a hat for humanity, try it out, and Jerry Holmes was about seven years ago, couldn't even find a candidate that fit the criteria. So I think if we are serious about that, we also need to look here, but we also need to look at the township. Need to get rid of the ten acre issue, okay, because what new family can come up and buy ten acres of land and then try to put something on it? So I guess what I'm saying is I don't know how, but, and thank you for looking at the issue, but I really would like to see government not get involved in actually development. Thank you.
Thanks, Alan. Anyone else for public comment?
Yes, since it's a good topic. I just want to just state your name and residence.
Mike McMillan, Northport, Will Spear Road. I just want to thank the village council for their confidence and appointing me to the, to the planning commission. What I can assure you is I'm not wed, wed to any idea in particular, any location, I should say. But I've been through this process for about a year and a half now. I've learned a lot. I also learned that my mind, my opinion can change based on feedbacks. And I'll always go back to somewhere I used to work, some, my old Pepsi job in Alabama. And this guy was, I was working one day, and he said, there's a reason God gave you two years, one mouth. And I didn't, like, five years later, I realized he was, it was intended for me. So I tried to preach that, and I tried to live in that lifestyle. I'm working in the public, so I can assure you that I'm going to give everybody their consideration and deserve and work towards the best solution for the local village and township. Thanks.
Looks like. Any other public comments? I see I got a Matt on Zoom with his hand raised.
Yes, hi, this is wife Kelly. I'm speaking on behalf of us both when I say that we couldn't agree with Eric Pope's anymore than what he said. And I appreciate him kind of bringing us to our attention. We live on Vinsor Way in the village, but we use the park frequently throughout the week. And now that it's getting warmer out, our kids are wanting to try to use the baseball diamond a little bit more. And I just would hate to see it go if we have other options. I'm all for affordable housing. I get the need, but not Buster Dame, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Uh, if there are no other takers, we, okay, sure, let's just make sure there's nobody else. Okay, no one else on Zoom? Anyone else in public? If, if none, we'll move on to our council comments. Go ahead, Will.
First, I want to thank Eric for becoming a community organizer and getting involved. The reason I got, the reason I'm sitting here is because the village did something that really pissed me off. And so I got myself appointed to the council, and then I ran twice because sometimes that's what it takes to get people involved in local government is when something they really don't like happens, and then all of a sudden they're like, hey, I'm starting going to meetings. I'm starting having my voice heard. So I'm glad that this has happened. I also was very surprised by the reaction for Buster Dame. I was like, oh, I didn't, you know, it's like, no one uses that thing. I drive by. And wouldn't it be a great spot? And it is. It's, it's a turnkey. It's, 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 it's perfect. But we all, I, you know, I, I'm listening to the pushback. I am seeing the signs. I am hearing that it does mean something to people. And maybe baseball isn't the most popular sport in Northport right now. And maybe that, you know, they want to keep it as a park regardless of whether, what baseball is. So I'm, I'm hearing that. So I'm thanking Eric, and I, I also want to encourage the council. And I think once our new guy gets here, Jared, I was very impressed by the elevation drawings I saw West Street. I do think we should look at alternatives. I think that, yeah, the recycle center, and there's, it's not just a power line. It's a power line easement, which means you've got, you got a problem with the deed and stuff. It's not that easy to solve, but it's not impossible, so. And, and it would, it would be more expensive because you don't have the road. It, it would cost more to build, but that is a trade-off for keeping a park. So I don't want you to think, or anyone to think, that even if we go through with the, the swap on the deed restriction, that Buster Dame is a done deal. It just might, the restriction might be in a better place protecting the wetland if we're going to have one restriction. That may go forward, it may not, but I, I do want everybody to know. That's more of a housekeeping thing to, because right now, if we drop that in midstream, just start it up again in ten years, we, you know, lost files, different people, you'd be starting from zero. So I, I do want to see that continue, but I, I've, I'm listening. And, and I'm, I think we should try to, if people want to keep this park, let's look at every alternative, and I think we've got some. I mean, that I wasn't even aware of. I just, I was told it's the best spot. I was like, nobody will care. Who uses that thing? Well, I was wrong. Okay, flat out, I was wrong. And, and I thought people would love it, and they don't. A lot of people don't. So, you know, I, that's called responsive government. And so I, Eric, thank you, and thanks for organizing people, and thanks for educating yourself on this and all the contributions you've made in terms of looking up other properties. Like, you did a great job. I think next time there's a planning commission opening, I hope you still want to get on it. I just wanted to go with the guy with a little more experience right now because I want to keep things moving because he's, he's up to speed, and I trust Mike. I know Mike. So that's all I have to say.
Susan.
Well, I, I, I did much of what Will said. What's great about this controversy is how many people have awakened to these issues. And that crowd last night was fantastic. Those people were there to learn and for the most part, to show their support for affordable housing. My main disappointment, if we, if we decide against Buster Dame is that, which again, was the low hanging fruit. We could have moved forward very quickly. And I just don't want to see this stalled. I don't want to see us stall on this because this is so important to the future of our community. And Eric is the future of our community and his three children. And I too would encourage you to, Eric, to step up and, and thrust yourself into this, into this decision-making process. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with the comments, and I really appreciate Eric's involvement. I also am listening to all of the feedback and feel that that's something I try really hard to do. I also am sitting here because of frustrations with the village. So I just want to say, if you're, you know, like, I, I already have said to Eric that I think that he should consider running for council. But, um, anyway, um, but I, I really appreciate all the feedback and all the people. And I thought last night's meeting was really great too. So I wanted to thank everyone that came and listened and learned along with us because I think that it's through that that we can find the best solutions.
Yeah, and I'll just echo all that, and I want to thank, you know, Dr. Barb Conley, Barb Conley, for getting that meeting together, contacting Yara Brown and Housing North and setting that up. I was just sort of her, her backup when she needed a little extra support. But in terms of that West Street location, you know, they did ask us for some locations, one from the village, one from the township, and they did allow me to keep those boards.
Oh, good.
Yes, so we, we still have that. And Peyton, who did the, is a civil engineer student right now, he said a lot of that was done with some of the elevation and grade and stuff in there. So those are our boards. I will bring those down here. They will be in the village so people can look at them. And.
There are other variables too.
Exactly.
In terms of, sorry, I'm taking, but in terms of, we got to see what new community vision is going to do. I mean, they're going to, whatever they do is going to be slow, I'm afraid, but. And then we have, but we also have two other private landowners in town. The new owners of the Haymeyer property, I've heard totally unsubstantiated that they want to do something affordable up there, sort of follow through with what the Haymers wanted to do. And they're willing to lose money to do it. And we got the guy that wants to, they may, may need rezoning. So that's two private things or three private things that may lessen the need. And then if we throw West Street in there, you know, we could make a big dent without touching Buster Dame. And, and I think that's, that would be the best thing to do, you know, I, I think, go slow. And, you know, people say, well, what if you want to do anything of scale? It's like, well, do we really want to do something of scale? Do we want some, one huge or maybe smaller one spread out? I'm not a planner. I don't, but this is, and I'm not on the planning commission, but this is something the planning commission can discuss at length. And I think, but there are definitely better ideas than putting it all in one place. I mean, I was all for it until now, maybe I'm, I'm not.
Well, and I do think our new manager, sorry.
Yeah.
But our new manager is a planner, so I think that that's going to be really helpful too.
In a few weeks, we're going to have somebody running this joint that knows what they're talking about, so. I didn't like that.
But I think that's one thing, when, when, when you're in public service, you have to be flexible. You have to be willing to respond to the citizens. And, and, and I do want to thank Rachel and Eric and Nancy for meeting me here at the village hall last week and, and talking through this issue. And, and I've said it before, Facebook is good for a lot of things and contacting people from afar, but, but there is no substitute for an interpersonal conversation. And that's what I learned when I worked at the Happy Hour, when Stan Fisher said, we don't have a TV because people can watch that at home. They come to the bar to talk to people. And, and, and that's how I've made my living, is communicating with people. And so if, is there anyone else?
Yeah, I just hope the Zoom people as well realize that this is not a done deal and that we're being very sincere about this, so.
Now, time to close.
If you'll indulge me, I'd like to, at least let the public know how we got to where we are because I think there's a lot of misconceptions. A couple of things. We've never looked at Buster Dame as the only place ever. When I first was tasked with the idea of finding affordable housing, and frankly, that was the first thing you asked me to do. That was when we did our strategic plan, that was top on our list. Okay, that's what you asked me to do. We've, we looked at every property that we own in the village, and the township did not quite the same, but that's what we did. I took all the things that we owned in the village that I considered to be even remotely viable and gave them to a developer. That was Ryan Philpatrick, who you've seen, he's, he's a consultant to Housing North. Gave those to him, and based upon his expertise, not mine, he said, these are the four best, West Street. And based upon his expertise, not mine, he said, these are the four best, West Street, Buster Dames. Um, uh, the, the, the school property that you discussed, what was the fourth one? Um, oh, uh, the, the hardscape in front of Seventh Street, okay, those are the four best. And of those, Buster Dames was the one he said, we would be able to develop the quickest, for all the reasons that I stated, so that's how this started. Um, and and in fact, had Mike, uh, Mike, uh, McMillan was involved by that point, in fact, something very early in his tenure.
Did you, did you show him the, uh, recycling center, or not?
No, for, for the reasons that that Will said, it was not considered, because A, it's next to a, in, uh, one of the more intense commercial industrial. Uh, uses in the village, okay, it has the, the, the power easement, okay, it would require the replacement of another of an, of, of the, of the recycling center. And it didn't have a road, so that's, those are the reasons that was not considered.
Okay.
And again, I wouldn't, it shouldn't say it wasn't considered, it was considered, but not, not deemed one of the four, four best, so that's where we got.
Okay.
And let's assume we took any one of those, okay, and we also knew the possibility of new community vision. But when we were first looking at this. New community vision had not yet acquired that parcel, and in fact, it looked very uncertain and unlikely that they would ever do that. Once they did, new community vision got involved with Peninsula Housing, I am also a board, a member of the Board of Directors of Peninsula Housing. And created a partnership for them to look at, 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 uh, at that parcel as potential for. For, uh, affordable housing, it has its own problems because there are wetland areas. And, um, a possibility of a conservation easement that may or may not affect the pro- property. It also has no, no, it's outside of sewer, uh, special assessment district. And there is only a two inch, I believe it's a two inch, uh, horse mane that goes to that property, we, we knew. That that could not, that, that two inch horse mane could not serve the timber shores or resort development that was proposed. And it would be unlikely to serve anything more than maybe a half a dozen, a half a dozen additional homes. So that was all kind of in the background as well, and we were waiting to see what would happen with new community vision. And to address the one comment that you made, government would not be involved in the development, period, end of story. What would happen is we would, at most, what we would be involved in. For example, if we chose for that, that to be rental housing, we might. Then again, we might not create a housing authority, where we would actually, we would actually continue to own the homes as they were rented, and. Most likely have a rental agent assist us with that. Our preference, though, would be that they be homes for sale and ownership. Under a community land trust model, where that Larry and Moby explained at the meeting last night, where the community land trust owns the land. Is able to sell the, the, the property at a substantially reduced price, and, um. Can restrict to whom the house can be sold, once the first, the people that own it wish to, wish to sell it or move on. We think that community land trust is a, land trust model is a very good one, we have never settled on Buster Dames as the be all and end all to this. But I will tell you in all sincerity, it is the best site. Bar none in the village, and we've looked at virtually every place that we can do it, we've done, don't shake your head, because you don't know.
Hey, Eric, it's not, it's not, you're, you're out of order, you're, you're out of order, you're out of order.
By far the best place for every, again, it is owned by, owned by municipality, you have a zero tax base at the beginning. There are public roads, village roads, not mid, not state highways. Surrounding it, you have complete control of that, it has water and sewer, it is flat, it does not need land balancing like a, like a slope. The sloped, uh, site would, all the developers that have looked at it have agreed, that is the best site, I'm, again, you may decide that. Keep your hands off it. But it will always be the best, the best site that you have available, it will always be. That the site on Seventh Street would have been a very good site, in fact, we had a developer that was interested in doing affordable housing on that. But it was very clear that the community was not going to tolerate that. That's one of the reasons when you consider the planning commission's recommendations for Seventh Street, that I fought with you very hard, I shouldn't say fought. I encouraged you very hard not to let that hardscape go. Because you, it, it would have been potentially available, in fact, Peninsula Housing said, we could put four duplexes on that easily. And have maybe as many as six to eight units on that parcel alone, but again, there are other uses that you wanted potentially for that. With the storage, the, the, the storage of, of, um, uh, overflow storage for marina, all kinds of things that were discussed for that. So we have looked at that issue for you intensively. And 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 considered many, many options, and I just want people to know that that's the case, this is not something also. It is not something that has been done under cover of darkness, this has been discussed, as you know, at plant, at, at both planning commission meetings. And village council meetings for at least a year in public. So. I just think it's important that you know the history of how we got here, and I would normally not be this verbose. This is probably the last chance I'll have to talk to this village manager, and to tell you, and frankly defend. What you have done, the planning commission done, and village staff has done to look at this issue. And and to be honest, I am tired of hearing, I want affordable housing, just not here. I am tired of hearing that, somebody has to get up and say, I will take it here, it's okay, somebody has to do that, and I agree with Commissioner, uh, Harper. The West Street property is perfect, it's perfect, and we were never gonna not consider it, and probably would do something there. But again, it's an acre, it's one acre, we can probably put a duplex, maybe one, maybe two, the, the. The drawing that you saw is a very good one, again, but that's, all that is, is a, is an elevation. Yeah, it doesn't take into consideration any of the site characteristics, you may not be able to do what you saw in that elevation, but. Again, we still will look at that, but the only way we're going to do this, the only way is going to be with involvement of government. Because it's the land that we own, and we can control how it gets developed. The last thing I'm going to say to you is this, if you think it's going to be done by the private sector, you are out of your mind, it's not going to happen. There's a lot on, on Fifth Street right now, and I believe it's under contract, it's just about a tenth of an acre. It's sold for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, do the math, that's a million five per acre. You cannot develop affordable housing in the village of Northport, other than on private, on publicly owned land, it will not happen with, unless you get subsidies. And then you are talking about the thirty percent of, of, uh, uh, area median income. All the quote, people that you don't want here, you know, and really, that's not, that's really kind of. A, a silly way to say it, but I've heard those comments from the public, you know, nobody would want to live in one of those stigmatized houses. These are not going to be like that, you know, you're talking about people that make eighty percent, you know what, does anybody here know what the area. Median income for Northport is, anybody? I bet you don't.
For Leland County, I just looked it up, it's, it's ninety thousand dollars.
In Northport, it exceeds a hundred thousand dollars. The area median income, what that means is there are as many people below that line as there are above that line. That's, do you know what, do you know the, in Leland County, what the median home sale price was last year? Eight hundred thousand dollars. We are in a crisis. We are at a crisis, and nobody's wants to recognize it. So I implore you to think outside of the box. When you're considering this issue, because it's going to be something that. Is going to get worse before it gets better, and the best comment I've seen on the subject comes from the owner of New Bohemia. And that is, if you want to have a movie set. For a town. Where houses are occupied thirteen weeks out of the year. That's where we're heading, that's where we're heading. You won't have a supermarket, you already don't have a hospital, you won't have a gas station. Glen Harbor doesn't have a gas station, but thirteen weeks out of the year, because that's when people are living there, that's where you're heading. Don't let that happen, I love this town too much to let that happen, you guys have been the absolute best. Best employer that I, that I've had up to this point, and I hope to heck that, that Leland County. Is as good as you have been.
Good luck with that.
All I can say is, after two weeks, so far, so good.
Great.
But you guys have been tremendous.
Well, we are gonna, we are gonna miss you, and, um. Yeah.
You've been a tremendous asset.
And you, you guys have, have, you know, everybody told me you're going to be tough, a tough group to work with, and I found it absolutely the opposite, you guys are dedicated. Dedicated, uh, to this town, and I'm, I'm very glad you took the chance to hire somebody that had never done this in his life.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
And thank you for making us all act like adults, because you did. That's, that was the difference.
Well, somebody's got to be mom and dad.
All right, and, uh, so with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn at eight twenty one, if I can get a second, all right, we are adjourned.